I think you got to read it off the wonderful server.
So it's unlimited, is that it?
Yeah.
Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now begin our open forum. Each member of the public will have five minutes to share their thoughts about anything on their minds. Please state your name and address before you start speaking. And the first person on the list is Ruby Bowman.
So this is, but this is open forum?
Yep.
Public invited to be heard.
It's open forum. Open forum.
Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive, Longmont. Mayor Coombs and council members, I've been following council's discussion regarding changes to the construction defects law, and I find it troubling that you would consider making it harder for homeowners to sue a home builder for shoddy construction. The purchase of a home is one of the biggest investments a person will make in his or her lifetime, so it isn't right that home building corporations get to hold all the cards, and the homeowner who has to live in the defective house has fewer options to get the builder to fix defects. So why are you even considering weakening the construction defects law in Longmont? Some in council seem to believe it will spur more condominium construction resulting in affordable housing. I believe this is a specious argument. It was reported in the Denver Post, the city of Lakewood passed such a measure in 2014, making it difficult for HOAs to sue developers, and it has not helped. Lakewood has yet to receive a development application for a condominium project. If council wants affordable housing, do it the old fashioned way by bringing back inclusionary zoning. It requires developers to sit aside units in their projects as affordable housing. And instead of trying to change the construction defects law by weakening it and giving an advantage to developers, why don't you support and advocate for changes to the law so that we can have rent control? Maybe then people will be able to afford to live in the many apartment complexes you have approved lately. A year ago in January, council was considering making changes to the city appeal process, and the proposed changes would have made it harder for citizens to appeal a major development application. It would have disenfranchised 99% of residents, and it would have made it easier for developers to build their projects. Fortunately, due to extreme public pressure, you came to your senses and backed off from those changes. I hope you come back to your senses again and back off from weakening the construction defects law. Please stand with homeowners, and don't let campaign donations from the Metro Housing Coalition PAC influence your decision to favor developers over homeowners. On another topic, when is the city going to build an emergency shelter for homeless people? On very cold nights, the only recourse for homeless, the homeless, is to take a bus to the Boulder Emergency Shelter or go to a local warming center, that is, when the temperature drops to 25 degrees if it is dry, or 32 degrees when it is wet. A human being can die of hypothermia at temperatures higher than 32 degrees. And what is a homeless person to do if he or she is sick with pneumonia or some other illness and can't spend a night in a warming shelter because the temperature drops only to 39 degrees? It is still very cold, particularly if you take into consideration the wind chill factor. Longmont has had a serious homeless situation for a very long time, yet the city provides very limited direct aid to these individuals. It is time for council to step up to the plate, build a homeless shelter, and invest in building more supportive permanent housing similar to the Lee Hill Housing Development in Boulder. Council is willing to build an extravagant double ice rink and pool facility at an enormous construction cost and probably a very high operating expense. You spend a lot of time helping developers and giving them direct financial assistance such as putting up our library and other public buildings as collateral for the new mall. Homeless people are the, one of the most vulnerable populations in our city, not developers. It is time for you to make the homeless a priority and build an emergency shelter in Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you. James Johnson?
Johnson? For free.
Okay, I was just wondering.
You can.
Yes, it's me again. I thought maybe I'd come back again, so you just don't forget my face. My name's James Johnston, I live at 619 Kimbark in Longmont. I've lived in Longmont for 65 years. In fact, where I live now, I've lived there for 29 years. And I moved there because the rent was cheap. But the landlady decided to sell it, and the new landlord is now trying to sell it again, and he gave us an eviction notice yesterday to get out by the 1st of February. And so, we've checked with realtors, we've checked everywhere that we could think of, Craigslist, everywhere, to try to find a house that we could afford. I'm on disability and social security, and I, my social security and disability will not cover rents like 1,500, 1,600 a month, because that's almost what I make. So, I gotta find something that we can afford, and I can't move out of Longmont because all my doctors are here, I'm on dialysis three times a week, and there's just nothing that I can do about that. So, I have money to pay, but it's just, I can't pay the exorbitant prices. I don't want something handed to me on a platter. And so, I'm here trying to find caring landlords that just doesn't want to raise their rent sky high just because they need to make an extra dollar. And I think that the council can move forward, as the lady said before, with homeless shelters and things like that. I don't want a homeless shelter, but I want a place that I can live in comfortably and pay the rent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Georgietta Johnson?
Oh, council member Peck, sorry. Do you want to? I want to address both of these issues, the one about the construction defect laws as well as the homeless shelter. As far as the construction defect laws, defects law goes, I agree that we probably shouldn't pass an ordinance for that. First of all, I don't think it'll hold up in court, because an ordinance, even though it's a law, if the, if the state supersedes that, it won't hold up. And as councilwoman Finley said last week or just a little while ago, that even if we do pass an ordinance, it probably won't improve Longmont's housing for a while. So, there are some other ways that we can offer, I guess incentives to builders. Other cities have done this, New York's done it with the Housing Preservation and Development Program, which is reducing property tax to developers, and we have the housing tax code that is coming up again for a vote in the legislature this, probably hopefully in March. So I think there's also green building that you can get grants for. It's very expensive to build, but I think that there is a way, there's also cities that have done certification programs on the builders and given warranties, checking along the way as building has been done, so that, to mitigate the litigation that the construction defects law is all about. As far as the homeless problem goes, the city has actually some really good programs that they, within the nonprofit sector, there's Hope, there's Agape, and the Longmont Housing Authority is building different units, different projects for low to middle income people. And I was wondering, Georgietta, are you on any of those lists for Spring Hill?
No, and we, we make too much money for those.
Okay. As far as the homeless shelter, I know that we are doing studies for the homelessness. There's the 10-year homeless study in Boulder County. For me, that's too long. We need something now, today.
Yes.
So, I'm asking the residents what you think of this idea of having under a study just a temporary shelter to get some data, because we have absolutely no data. We don't know who's transient, we don't know who is homeless but working, we don't know who is homeless because they have mental or physical problems. If we had a homeless shelter for temporarily, maybe a year, to collect that data, we might find out where our homeless problem actually is. And we might find out we don't need a homeless shelter once we connect, collect that data. So, this is an idea that I am presenting, that if it has any appeal, that we just rent a place for a shelter. I know Agape is a great warming house, but when it's freezing during the day, there is still no place for people to go. Perhaps there are homeless people who would like to get a job, but they have no place to brush their teeth, take a shower, get clean clothes, get a haircut, so they can't apply for a job, or they're so worried about where their belongings are during the day that they don't do a good job on the job. So this is just an idea to try to see what we could actually come up, because I think we're supposed to be solution oriented. So, thank you for listening, that's my ideas.
Good evening, Mayor and councilman. It's nice to see you again. I came because I'm honest, and I'm came because we have a need, and that's what this town is about, that's what I feel. And I feel like some way, somehow, there's got to be a house for us. And my husband was talking about, he has had people show him houses, probably 35 in a men's group that he goes to, besides, on the internet, besides calling all the different people, besides he was on the housing, and besides he was in the city, so he's familiar with all the things. And I am somewhat, as a librarian, there's a librarian here today, that I used to read, I used to take my grandchildren to the library, I volunteered at the school, and you don't know, but I graduated with administrative office degree, and then my husband got ill. So then therefore, I could not work, because I want to make sure he does good, and I work around him. So, there's got to be a house, that's the way I feel, there's got to be, with landlords, there's got to be caring people, and I feel like some way, otherwise, if it just keeps going up, 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 nobody can even live here. And so, I feel like that, you know, it's a nice city, and I go along with the housing too, I mean, the homeless too, I feel sorry for them, we do need a, a place for certain people that do not have a home, and like us, I told our landlord when he said that to us, I said, I said, "Well, we can't be on the street and I can't kill my husband, that would not be nice," you know, because he's give his all, and we're doing our best to try to find a place. It's not like we're trying to have people carry us and, and give to us and us not do our part. We really don't want that, we want to do our part, because that's the kind of people we are, is helpers helping people. So, I feel like that there's got to be a way, some way, somehow, with the help of God and with people working together and caring, and I also feel about that, about the homeless. Another subject that I could say that maybe others won't like, but the breweries, I feel like I'm concerned about the breweries with people going and drinking and then driving. That really troubles me, I've never drank before in my life. And I feel like that I had, I had a grandson die, and he drank off and on, I've had a granddaughter, and I've had a, a son. And so, that concerns me a little bit about a lot of breweries. And the marijuana, which what we have never tried, or I don't have no desire, that bothers me too. But I feel like that it's a, it's a wonderful city, and I feel like that we're all working together to make it where people want to live here and care about each other and have an enjoyment as a wonderful city. Thank you very much for listening to me and letting me talk. Lord bless you. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna say something, but Ruby's gone.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Oh, I was waiting to recall, make sure there's no discussion.
Good evening, I'm Mike Schatzweiler, 12001 Twilight Street, Longmont. Thank you, Mayor Coombs and council, for listening to your constituents this evening. I believe at times it's important to lift our eyes from everyday local concerns towards long-term and global economic issues. Longmont is beginning to feel the impacts of the digital information age, only the third great economic revolution of all of human history. The disruptive nature of this revolution means that the grim reality is that 90-
In fact, where I live now, I've lived there for 29 years. And I moved there because the rent was cheap. But the landlady decided to sell it. And the new landlord is now trying to sell it again. And he gave us an eviction notice yesterday to get out by the first of February. And so, we've checked with realtors, we've checked everywhere that we could think of, Craigslist, everywhere, to try to find a house that we can afford. I'm on disability and social security. And I, my social security and disability will not cover rents like 1,500, 1,600 a month. Because that's almost what I make. So, I gotta find something that we can afford. And I can't move out of Longmont because all my doctors are here. I'm on dialysis three times a week. And there's just nothing that I can do about that. So, I have money to pay, but it's just, I can't pay the exorbitant prices. I don't want something handed to me on a platter. And so, I'm here trying to find caring landlords that just doesn't want to raise their rent sky-high just because they need to make an extra dollar. And I think that the council can move forward, as the lady said before, with homeless shelters and things like that. I don't want a homeless shelter, but I want a place that I can live in comfortably and pay the rent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Georgietta Johnson?
Georgietta, push your button.
Oh, Councilmember Pack, sorry. Do you want to?
I want to address both of these issues. The one about the construction defect laws as well as the homeless shelter. As far as the construction defect laws, defects law goes, I agree that we probably shouldn't pass an ordinance for that. First of all, I don't think it'll hold up in court because an ordinance, even though it's a law, if the, if the state supersedes that, it won't hold up. And as Councilwoman Finley said last week, or just a little while ago, that even if we do pass an ordinance, it probably won't improve Longmont's housing for a while. So, there are some other ways that we can offer, I guess incentives to builders. Other cities have done this. New York's done it with the Housing Preservation and Development Program, which is reducing property tax to developers. And we have the housing tax code that is coming up again for a vote in the legislature this, probably, hopefully, in March. So, I think there's also green building that you can get grants for. It's very expensive to build, but I think that there is a way. There's also cities that have done certification programs on the builders and given warranties, checking along the way as building has been done, so that, to mitigate the litigation that the construction defects law is all about. As far as the homeless problem goes, the city has actually some really good programs that they, within the nonprofit sector, there's Hope, there's Agape, and the Longmont Housing Authority is building different units, different projects for low-to-middle-income people. And I was wondering, Georgietta, are you on any of those lists for Spring Hill?
No, and we, we make too much money for those.
Okay. As far as the homeless shelter, I know that we are doing studies for the homelessness. There's the 10-year homeless study in Boulder County. For me, that's too long. We need something now, today. So, I'm asking the residents what you think of this idea of having, under a study, just a temporary shelter to get some data, because we have absolutely no data. We don't know who's transient. We don't know who is homeless but working. We don't know who is homeless because they have mental or physical problems. If we had a homeless shelter for temporarily, maybe, a year, to collect that data, we might find out where our homeless problem actually is. And we might find out we don't need a homeless shelter once we connect, uh, collect that data. So, this is an idea that I am presenting, that if it has any appeal, that we just rent a place for a shelter. I know Agape is a great warming house, but when it's freezing during the day, there is still no place for people to go. Perhaps there are homeless people who would like to get a job, but they have no place to brush their teeth, take a shower, get clean clothes, get a haircut. So, they can't apply for a job. Or they're so worried about where their belongings are during the day, that they don't do a good job on the job. So, this is just an idea to try to see what we could actually come up, because I think we're supposed to be solution-oriented. So, thank you for listening. That's my ideas.
Good, Georgietta.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. It's nice to see you again. I came because I'm honest, and I'm came because we have a need. And that's what this town is about. That's what I feel. And I feel like some way, somehow, there's gotta be a house for us. And my husband was talking about, he has had people show him houses, probably 35 in a men's group that he goes to, besides, on the internet, besides calling all the different people, besides he was on the housing, and besides he was in the city, so he's familiar with all the things. And I am somewhat, as a librarian, there's a librarian here today that, I used to read, I used to take my grandchildren to the library, I volunteered at the school, and you don't know, but I graduated with administrative office degree, and then my husband got ill. So, then therefore, I could not work, because I want to make sure he does good, and I work around him. So, there's gotta be a house. That's the way I feel. There's gotta be, with landlords, there's gotta be caring people. And I feel like some way, otherwise, if it just keeps going up, 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 nobody can even live here. And so, I feel like that, you know, it's a nice city, and I go along with the housing too, I mean, the homeless too, I feel sorry for them. We do need a, a place for certain people that do not have a home, and like us, I told our landlord when he said that to us, I said, I said, "Well, we can't be on the street, and I can't kill my husband." That would not be nice, you know, because he's give his all, and we're doing our best to try to find a place. It's not like we're trying to have people carry us and, and give to us, and us not do our part. We really don't want that. We want to do our part, because that's the kind of people we are, is helpers helping people. So, I feel like that there's gotta be a way, some way, somehow, with the help of God, and with people working together and caring. And I also feel about, about the homeless. Another subject that I could say that maybe others won't like, but the breweries, I feel like I'm concerned about the breweries with people going and drinking and then driving. That really troubles me. I've never drank before in my life. And I feel like that I had, I had a grandson die, and he drank off and on. I've had a granddaughter, and I've had a, a son. And so, that concerns me a little bit about a lot of breweries. And the marijuana, which what we have never tried, or I don't have no desire, that bothers me too. But I feel like that it's a, it's a wonderful city, and I feel like that we're all working together to make it where people want to live here, and care about each other, and have an enjoyment as a wonderful city. Thank you very much for listening to me and letting me talk. Lord bless you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna say something, but Ruby's gone.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Oh, I was waiting to recall, make sure there's no discussion. Good evening. I'm Mike Schatzweiler, 12001 Twilight Street, Longmont. Thank you, Mayor Coombs and Council, for listening to your constituents this evening. I believe at times it's important to lift our eyes from everyday local concerns towards long-term and global economic issues. Longmont is beginning to feel the impacts of the digital information age, only the third great economic revolution of all of human history. The disruptive nature of this revolution means that the grim reality is that 90% of jobs that existed in 1960 will no longer exist in 2050. Authors from Stephen Covey to Jeremy Rifkin, Bruce Katz, and Peter Drucker write about this economic reality. Jim Clifton, staunch conservative and CEO of Gallupul, wrote the book, "The Coming Jobs War: What Every Leader Must Know About the Future of Jobs Creation." In it, he states, "A global jobs war is coming, and there's no time to waste. The cities that focus everything on creating good jobs are the ones that will win. Not just any job will do. You want good jobs, knowledge-based jobs. The global economy is moving to the knowledge worker. Cities that understand this can prosper those that don't face bankruptcy." Unfortunately, in Longmont, we have been losing this battle. According to LAEC statistics, the total cumulative primary jobs created from 2004 through 2014 was 354, and that is before the departure of Amgen and Digital Globe. Our total for the 12-year span through 2015 will likely be net negative jobs creation during a period of gaining over 10,000 new residents. Issues from affordable housing, revenues, retail leakage, and more are largely rooted in a lack of primary jobs. This in a city located in one of the economically hottest counties, in one of the hottest states in the country? This is not the fault of LAEC, nor the fault of the city. I suggest to you that is the extraordinary catalytic economic impact of colleges of higher education that is the root cause, exemplified by the $5.3 billion economic impact documented rising out of the University of Colorado alone, each and every year, and more than $15 billion in economic impact of other college campuses. These college catalyst towns have created tens of thousands of jobs and hundreds of businesses while our job rolls have been declining. With this council and this year, there is an incredibly rare but brief window of opportunity to move out of the shadow of Boulder and CU, to become more economically competitive in our own right. The Comprehensive Plan, Multimodal Plan, River Corridor, Village Mall, and Optic Fiber Initiatives representing over $250 million in city investment offers unprecedented opportunity to move in a new direction, to create an unrivaled culture of innovation and job creation as part of a local smart city and knowledge-based worker economy paradigm. I applaud LAEC for bringing nationally-renowned speaker, Amy Liu, of the Brookings Institute, to speak at the Longmont Museum tomorrow morning at 8:30 a.m. I urge everyone that can do so to attend. While I can't predict what she will have to say, her contemporary at Brookings, Bruce Katz, often writes about the rise of innovation districts and the geography of innovation. Ultimately, it's all about placemaking, to build a local culture of innovation. I believe that the city staff and city council gets it and is moving in the right direction. Let's keep up and continue this good work. Staff's effort to create a state-recognized special tax district offers a rare opportunity to create innovation districts, arts districts, maker districts, and so on, and can create jobs and drive our economy. There is also the possibility of finally bringing a college campus to town, in concert with the River Corridor work being done. I urge everyone to attend tomorrow's talk to gain further understanding of the creative and knowledge worker revolution paradigm. Our future lies with placemaking, to create a resilient city, a smart city with smart jobs, a culture of innovation for younger generations, retaining and attracting youth and millennials, and to leave a legacy of prosperity for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I would like to let you know that just the other day, I went to ribbon-cutting at Intel Corporation, where they're adding 80 offices. They've grown from like 20 to 50 employees. They're expanding like crazy. Yeah, we had this big loss of, when Amgen moved out, but, you know, Digital Globe, we still have 60% of their workforce, and they'll be here for 15 years or so, or maybe longer, maybe forever. And we can't help, you know, the national policies of tax policies where corporations can move, you know, overseas and make less, pay less taxes. You know, I wish that city council had the power to do that, but, you know, basically, even with the loss of two big, huge companies like that, we're only down four jobs. I think Jessica Erickson is doing a fantastic job, and I think we're on a track to turn this, and I think it's also better and healthier that we're getting more of these entrepreneurial, smaller companies, because it's a more diverse workforce, not just two big, large companies. So, I am, I'm really excited about our future, and I'm really excited about having Jessica Erickson leading the, that effort too. So, and I also think that the fact that the Longmont City is now a part of LAEC, working together instead of separate, is a good thing. So, I'm, I'm very positive about the direction that she's going under last council and this council, so.
I could agree. If I could just add, it's for that reason, the very reasons that you said, that I understand the importance of startup businesses, entrepreneurial innovation. It's for that reason I co-founded Tinker Mill. I conceived and co-founded startup Longmont. I'm involved in Sustainable Revolution. It's all about smart jobs and innovation and the work LAEC is doing.
I think we're all in agreement.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Uh, eight, oh, Councilmember Christensen.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I think that, I, I thank you, Mike, because that's exactly what we need to do, is concentrate more on getting good jobs and better jobs here, and also leveraging the fact that we are between CSU and CU Boulder. We have Front Range Community College, and yet, there does not seem to be a lot of coordination between these facilities. And these are incredible, incredible resources we have that we're simply ignoring. We, we certainly need to rely less on large, what we have been calling, primary employers, but that's sort of outdated terminology in a way. Less on large firms that do, are at the mercy of, really, global, sort, global economics. And more on local, medium, and small businesses, and startups, and things like that, because they actually have a better record of staying here and of being, having more stability and giving more people a chance. And while we're talking about the creative and knowledge economy, that's very good, but there, there truly are a lot of people in our society who have also a right to a dignified and a decent wage. And we need to be sure that they have some kind of work. And there, there, there need to be more companies that actually offer a range of jobs and a way, a pathway upward, if people want to take that. But also, just a basic decent wage for anybody who works there. Low-end jobs are still jobs, and they're necessary, and they're very important for people being able to actually afford to live in a home. So, that's what I would like to see, is for us to really be very supportive of these small and medium-sized businesses. And things like Intel, which is part of a very large corporation, but on a local basis, they've expanded and expanded and expanded. They're very smart, and we have a lot of good, smart companies, and we need to support them in Longmont.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess it's just kind of great to know me some things, so I figure I might as well speak my mind since it's open forum. If anybody wants to come down and yell at me, you know, let's open it up. The, a couple of thoughts, first of all, Mike, where'd you go? I think, we've, we've had private conversations, and just to state it in public, I think it'd be a great idea if there was a university, CU, CSU, UNC, that wanted to open an annex in Longmont. I think that would be awesome. How to do that? I don't know. So, if you've got some ideas, I'd be more than willing to listen. Johnson's, every week you come, my stomach goes like this, and then my heart goes like that. I'd encourage you to work with Karen. Even if it's small, take it, because the only thing worse than how we feel now is if in two or three weeks, you don't have a home, because that would stink. So, you know, maybe get something now, and then let's keep looking, you know? And then, and then I know Ms. Bowman left, but she said a few things that I, I keep hearing in the community a lot. And so, just want to go on the record, and I think I've gone on the record before with this stuff, but, first of all, you know, it's, it's a question of limited resources. So, if we've got, if I've got $20, and only $20, I can do certain things with that $20. I can give it away to somebody, give it to one of my boys who's gonna go buy candy or hamburgers. I can invest it. I could put it under my mattress. I, I have all kinds of things, but I've only got $20. And so, and so, given that the city also has limited funds, you know, Twin Peaks, we, I mean, the mall, I mean, the, the city gave away 27 and a half million dollars to those rich, greedy developers. No, we didn't. Essentially, what we said was, "We're gonna give away 27 and a half million dollars in order to have them give us back $116 million over the lifespan of the mall." We didn't just give it away, we actually put it into an investment that will provide tax revenue, that will then allow us to do other things with that money. As far as the, the certificates of deposit, is that what we call them?
Participation.
Participation. If I, if me and my family, we're gonna take out a loan, and I put up my house, but I'm worth $5 million, and for some reason, I don't pay the loan back, and they come and they want to take away my house, I'm either gonna give them my house or write a check out of the $5 million. And I'm not worth $5 million, by the way. But I kind of look at the COPs as the same way, you know? The city is not going to get out of that debt. Whether they want to take away City Hall, or the library, or whether we write a check out of the general fund, we have to pay back the money. Longmont is never going to declare bankruptcy. We don't qualify. So, by putting up our public buildings, we weren't gonna lose them, ever. They're not any more at risk as, than normal.
They're less at risk.
The what?
They're actually less at risk, because we're paying back less money.
Correct.
And you're never gonna default on bonds.
It's to get cheaper, yes, it's to get cheaper interest rates.
It saves us $2 million in interest.
So, it was actually, I mean, investing in Twin Peaks was good for the city, because we were, again, investing to get sales tax revenues. We put up the public buildings, because it was a good business decision to lower our interest rate for those loans. And those are the kind of things that would allow us to continue to do things like affordable housing and homeless shelters. Speaking of homeless shelters, so, I certainly am always tempted to give away the $20, because someone needs it. But once it's gone, it's gone. And so, with a homeless shelter, right now, we've got the Agape Center, we've got several local churches, you know, doing warming centers voluntarily. It's working. But the one thing that keeps going through my mind is we're talking about homeless shelters and affordable housing, and just putting it out there, is that, no offense, Mayor, as many of you know, I'm an attorney, and it's, I'm rarely in court representing a defendant who takes a deal or is convicted, and the judge doesn't look at him or her and say, "You know what? For the next two years while you're on probation, you can't use alcohol, you can't use drugs, you can't smoke pot." And the reason why they do that is because, the reason why the crime occurred was because they were either high, drunk, or on drugs. I do family law as well. Divorces happen, families break down, domestic violence happens because of alcohol, drugs, and pot. And as we continue to push forward with our breweries, our craft brewing, our bars, our local, you know, even if they're not in the city, pot shops, recreational, medicinal, whatever, you can't continue to say, "Let's go ahead and service the homeless community" without realizing that our community has a real problem with condoning the very things that are gonna lead our kids to becoming more likely to be homeless and engaging in substance abuse. So, I just sit here thinking and engaging in conversation, or listening to conversations, I find it somewhat ironic. And I do think that an ice rink and pool, and we need ball fields, we need wrestling mats, we need, we need these things. Less beer, less pot, more ball fields, more wrestling mats, more investing in our youth and our education, and we'll have less homeless and problems in the future. That's, that's, thus endeth my rant tonight.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you for that rant. I, my whole point about the homeless is that you have an opinion, Councilman Bagley, about why people are homeless, and we don't know why people are homeless. That is just an opinion. That is my point about, before we can actually make a decision, I think that we need some data. And that is the whole point of having a temporary shelter where we can actually have people come in during the day and perhaps see how many of them are just passing through. How many people are addicted? How many people are working but have no place to go during the day? Or they're sleeping in their cars or their tents? Unless, and until we have data on those people, we cannot make a decision. So, just to say that they're all addicts, or that is the reason that people are homeless, is disingenuous to people without homes.
Now, we're getting plugged in on each other.
Yes, I love it.
But this is open, this is exactly how it works. This is an open forum for residents, not for us, back and forth, which is.
Councilmember Bagley.
But we can, and Ruby left, or else she would be here yelling at me. And so, so, back in a past life, I did a lot of work with Fortune 500 companies, as well as large nonprofits. And there's a group out in Los Angeles where you can't even work there, the Los Angeles, in that Los Angeles homeless community, they give you a yellow shirt. In order to become a mentor in that organization, you actually have to have been homeless. And even though I've done work with them, you don't get the yellow shirt unless you actually come from there. And there's plenty of data, not always, but the vast majority of homelessness has to do with mental illness and substance abuse. Not always, not always, but that's the data. It's there. And I don't think we need to actually do an experiment to understand that, that, anyway, I, I think that the data's there.
Councilmember Pack.
Los Angeles and Longmont are two totally different demographics, and we are council people for the city of Longmont, not for the city of Los Angeles. I want data on Longmont. Not a 10-year study on Boulder County, but data on Longmont. How many people are the police picking up every night, moving from one park to the other? Why are they? How many people are running across neighborhoods on, in, on Emery, and why are they doing that? And I think that data is very important before we can make any decisions about what to do for them. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
I think if you talk to the police force that does outreach for homelessness, you'll find that they have a lot of information about the homeless, and what they say is that everybody's got a different story. And everybody does. This is not "the homeless," this is people who do not have homes. That's actually an important distinction. We don't refer to "the women," or "the blacks," or "the" anything, because it's kind of patronizing, you know, and it glumps them all in one group. 80% of the people who are women, who are homeless, are homeless because of domestic violence. They're not drunks, they're just, they don't want to get beaten up and killed and...
All the husbands are.
Yeah, that's true. And that, I mean, I'm not dismissing that that is a huge problem. It's been a huge problem for a century, that's why we had prohibition, which was a valiant attempt, but didn't work at all. But, you know, there, there is a big problem with drugs and alcohol, but not everybody isn't capable of having a drink every night, or once a week, and leaving it at that, you know? But there are many, many different problems. We've had the greatest meltdown in, since 1929 in our society. A lot of people are homeless because they've been foreclosed on, can't, have not been able to find anything since. There are many, many, many reasons. It's complicated. It would be useful to have Longmont data, but I think we do have, we do have a substantial number of, a substantial amount of data that may be not particular to Longmont, but it is particular to Boulder County. And we do know that most of the people, I think 75% of the people in Longmont are families with children, whereas in Boulder, it's the opposite.
We're still gonna have an opportunity during council remarks at the end of the meeting to have these discussions amongst ourselves, so I think we should probably move forward... move forward and let the people that are here waiting to speak. Um, Amy Fontanat?
Fontano.
Fontanat?
Fontano.
Fontano, okay.
Yeah, you don't pronounce the T. Mayor Coombs, council members, good evening, and thank you all for being here. Thank you so much for giving us this, this opportunity to express ourselves. I always learn a lot from these public forums. Brian asked me not to yell at you guys tonight, and I told him I'm not here to yell at you, I'm actually here to thank you for a decision that you made a couple months ago, it's a little late to thank you for this, but, uh, in November, you approved, um, the proposal for a test, like, uh, I have to look at my notes here, um, a pilot weed treatment trial to assess efficacy and costs of using more pollinator-friendly alternatives to deal with the unwanted plants, otherwise known as weeds, in our town. Um, and it's really encouraging to me to see that the city is willing to open up this conversation and really take a look at how pesticides affect not only pollinators, but the soil, and the water, and the worms, and the people that live in this town. Um, and I really hope that this is just the beginning of a serious commitment to this issue, I really think it's crucial. And I say this not only because I'm a hobbyist beekeeper, and a tree hugger, and a pollinator lover, and a butterfly lover, whatever, I'm all of those things, and those are the reasons that I have come to educate myself about the issue, but what I've really come to realize is that it's so much bigger than all of those things. The way we treat our land, I love the term land management, land as in soil, is extremely, extremely important. One of my favorite Franklin Roosevelt's quotes is, "A nation that destroys its soil destroys itself." I bet FDR would like to know how we are treating the soil in the park that we named after him. And now that I've quoted Roosevelt, I also wanna quote our mayor, Dennis Coombs. Don't worry, it's good. So, in this month's city line, in, in Mayor Coombs' message to the community, he highlights all the innovative things that Longmont has done and is currently doing that's calling national attention. A lot of things that we, he, let's see, he says, "We're getting national recognition for being willing to control our own destiny." And he opens it up by saying, "Longmont has always been fiercely independent." I won't read the whole thing, but he talks a lot about things that Longmont is rightfully very proud of, flood relief, um, the fast internet service, opening up the discussion about oil and gas development. And the second to the last line reads, "We," meaning Longmont, "have always shown a resolve to tackle issues head-on and to create innovative solutions that serve the community." So, I'm hoping that this resolve will lead the city to go beyond this pilot study and create and implement some sort of B-Save resolution, like Boulder's done, like Lafayette's done, like lots of other cities are doing all over the nation. But actually, I really, I hope that, um, we live up to this, being independent and innovative thinkers, and go beyond just restricting neonicotinoid pesticides, that's the pesticide that's systemic, and it's been linked to a lot of the pollinator declines, but a lot, there's a lot of other pesticides out there, I'm sure there are pesticides currently being developed. Recently, it came out finally that Roundup, which everyone's been using gleefully for years, thinking it's fine, is actually carcinogenic. Um, so I just, I really urge us to really rethink the way we are treating our land, really take the time to look at integrated pest management and other ways, and just creating diversity in our, in our landscapes, um, and just look at it from a lens of doing the most good and the least harm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
Um, I'd like to say something to Amy, thank you so much for coming, because this helps educate people, um, the whole, the public in general. We, I was just talking to Bob Allen before the meeting about neo-nic, neonics, and, uh, how much the city uses and doesn't use. We really do use very little, and we try to inject that, and I know that's just one problem, but the, uh, the problem is very broad range having to do with, I'm, I'm a gardener too, so I, I get it, you know, but when you have people who just do very, don't wanna have to spend their entire weekend weeding, they go to the store, they buy something that says Rid-X or Kill-All or something, and they spray it all over creation, and they, that's, that saves them time, but they really do not understand what they're doing. Most people generally, um, they don't mean ill, but they don't understand the repercussions. And so, it's not just the city, the city actually does have a problem, a policy of not, of lessening pesticide use and things like that. But it's a broad-range problem with, with, um, householders everywhere who spray things all over the place. And so, if we could educate people, for instance, maybe in our newsletter that comes out, about using these things intelligently, so they weren't so casual about it, that would be very helpful. And, everybody, take the responsibility to educate your neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, James.
All right, James Kinworthy, the one oh seven Caribou Place. I came with a topic, but not with a lot of preparation, so I may stumble around a little bit. First of all, I wanna say ditto to everything that Ruby said, and ditto to everything that Amy said. And I'd like to talk about the homeless problem a little bit. I don't remember how long ago Ronald Reagan was president, but it's been forty years? Thirty-five years? And I don't know how old you were, Brian Bagley, when Ronald Reagan was president, but before he became president, there were very few homeless people. And having homeless people on the street is a political action from Ronald Reagan. He closed up a lot of, uh, what I wanna say, institutions that took care of those people. And yeah, things have gotten a lot worse since then, and that's because of the corporate system. Okay, I'm gonna refer you to an article I saw on the internet, so take out your pen and take some notes. Uh, the site is EcoWatch, E-C-O-W-A-T-C-H, and the article, the first part of the article came out on January sixth, and the second part of the article came out on January thirteenth, so it shouldn't be too hard to find. And the name of the article is, "The Solution Under Our Feet: How Regenerative Organic Agriculture Can Save the Planet." And it's about carbon in the soil and carbon in the atmosphere. And the thing that caught my eye is this. A little background, there's carbon in, there's carbon in the soil, and it belongs there, and it is useful in the soil, and too much carbon in the atmosphere gives us things like the flood we had two or three years ago. So, the idea is to sequester carbon in the soil by trees, shrubs, perennials, and a change in the way we do agriculture. Okay, if you increase the soil, if you increase the carbon in the soil by two percent, that will offset one hundred percent of all greenhouse gas emissions going into the atmosphere. Dr. Ratan Lyle, Ohio State Soil Scientist. And, you do that by green growing things. And in the soil, there's a lot of, um, what do I wanna say? Symbiotic relationships between all the microscopic things that grow there, including fungi that shoot out rays, and they penetrate the roots of different plants, and there's communication, there's, there's, uh, chemical communication goes on there. So, if you're interested in helping your grandchildren and your children, do it in your backyard, that's, that, that's where we can work, in our backyard. So, uh, let's see, twenty to thirty percent of man-made greenhouse gases in the atmosphere comes from industrial agriculture. So, that can be fixed, that can be, that can be modified. And there's just one thing I want, else I wanna say in this article, see if I can find He recommends a book, and I've read this book, and I can tell you it's excellent. You don't have to read the whole book, just read chapter one. And the name of the book is, "The Soil Will Save Us: How Scientists, Farmers, and Foodies Are Healing the Soil to Save the Planet." Yeah, tree huggers, you bet. Uh, let's see, anything else? I just want, I just want you to be able to find the article, it's on EcoWatch, and it's about regenerative organic agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Natty Pinman, six oh nine Collier Street. Hi, councilmembers, and Mr. Mayor, and fellow residents. Tonight, I'd like to talk about how the character of Collier Park has changed in the last couple of years, and make a couple of suggestions for how we might begin to return our parks and Collier Parks specifically to safer and friendlier places for neighborhood residents. Um, I have lived at my current address for about seven years, and my home is located almost directly across the street from the Collier Park Shelter at Sixth and Collier, and I have a clear view of the picnic tables and benches under the shelter. Uh, when I first moved to this address, there was a significant police presence in the neighborhood. Several times a day, I would see police cars around the park. Generally speaking, the park was quiet and a great place for neighborhood residents to walk their dogs and sit and visit with each other. In the last year or two, the character of the park has changed significantly, and specifically at that particular corner, um, where the shelter is, the shelter has become a hangout for what I call street people. Uh, neighbors still walk their dogs and enjoy the park, however, this particular corner does not feel like a safe place to linger, and sometimes not to walk by. In approximately the last year and a half, I have called nine-one-one three times, um, as a result of hearing and seeing assaults, or threats of assaults in and around that shelter. In addition, since June of last year, we have had a new resident in the neighborhood. He lives in an RV, and he parks his RV on the streets, um, bordering Collier Park. And, uh, his favorite parking spots, especially during the summer, were near the shelter at Sixth and Collier. Um, with the exception of the train noise, I can see why someone would want to live at Collier Park with the city, um, restroom facilities that actually allows also bathing, although that's not what it's intended for, a source of city water, mature trees, lots of shade to park your RV in, and nice lush green grass. The effect of having the RV parked near the shelter has been to expand socializing in that area. I have met the RV resident, and he is very friendly and forthcoming, and, uh, after he had been living there for quite a few months, and winter was approaching, as I said, he, he's been there since June, it might, may even have been May, um, I was, uh, curious about what his plans were, since the restroom facility was due to close at October, on October fifteenth, and I asked him if he had plans for relocating someplace farther south, to a warmer climate. He said he would like to do that, however, he needed to stay in the area to report to his parole officer. And so, any hope that I had that this was a temporary situation was put to bed, and he is still living there, although, um, I think he's, he's not always at Collier Park now, but I still do see him probably like four days of the week, and nights. Um, recently, I called a few other front-range cities to ask about their codes regarding parking RVs on city streets, and these are the results. I found that the following cities do not allow RV parking on city streets, Fort Collins, Loveland, Denver, Colorado Springs, and Pueblo. Um, in these cities, you may park your RV in front of your house for loading and unloading purposes only, but otherwise, parking is not allowed at all. RV living as an affordable, low-cost alternative to housing is not a new or unique idea. California has been dealing with this issue for some time. The predominant solution in California has been to ban overnight parking of oversized vehicles, and to limit parking to two hours. This has resulted in cities sprinkled with parking restriction signs. The city of Austin recently planned to establish an eleven-acre park where they could, uh, I'm sorry, I just have a little bit more, where they could, um, accommodate a hundred and fifty RVs, and this project has not been implemented. So, to summarize, because RV living has become problematic in other cities, and to avoid Longmont becoming a unique haven for RV living along the front range, and because it is affecting the character of our Collier Park neighborhood, and is contributing to misuse of the park's facilities, I'm proposing that the city of Longmont either prohibit or place restrictions on RV parking and RV living within the city. I would also like to see a return of, uh, greater police presence around Collier Park. Thank you.
Thank you. So, in, in these cities like Fort Collins and Loveland, if you have a, say, a relative from out of town, and they come, they can park in front of your own house then, right?
Doesn't Eddie.
Yep. All right, thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Harold and, I see Chief Butler's here, can y'all get together with, with Ms. Pinman and talk to her? Thank you. Especially about the, uh, more, uh, police presence.
Hi, I'm Prudence Carter, I live at one fifty-two Fourth Avenue in Longmont. I've lived in Longmont for about five months. I wanna say I appreciate the conversation about, uh, the homeless between Councilmember Christensen, Peck, and Mr. Bagley, Brian. It's okay. Um, just to let you know that, um, there, there is homelessness, and there's also housing insecurity, so I think those are two separate issues. Um, as far as data, I personally believe there's enough data on the books, um, there are behavioral health issues, which I think that we need to recognize, that may be due to drugs and alcohol. I've lived in many, many big cities, um, and I have to tell you that behavioral health is the number one, almost the number one reason folks are homeless, they have severe behavioral health issues. I also just wanna address the use of neonicotinoids. Um, I see that the city is going to spend twenty thousand dollars in investigating this. I must say, uh, there is data from Boulder, Lafayette, and Lewisville, who have banned neonics. Um, the Wall Street Journal had an article, one six sixteen, about neonics, the EPA has labeled them a hazard to bee colonies. I also wanna say that using the newsletter, which the city puts out, is very, very good. Um, when I moved here, when we went to plant our garden, we went to certain stores and said, "We would like neonic free plants," and they thought we were crazy in Longmont, so we bought them in Boulder. Um, the other thing I would like to talk about is the pool. I heard there was going to be a new pool, I'm hoping that there is, because I'm a swimmer. Um, so, I'm wondering when there are, it's like the wrestling mats. Um, I'm hoping that as things progress, that if there's some way to commute on the city website... website where projects are, that would be great. I also want to say that I'm very disappointed that the Whole Foods is now coming to the end of next year. End of this year. If it was '17, I would really be in a tizzy. I also want to talk about bulky pickup. I see we have Western Disposal. Most large cities, then we are becoming large with 100,000 people. They do have something called bulky pickup, where you can put your old couch in front of your house and the city pays for it to be picked up. I have to say that I have never seen so many couches on the streets since college days. And it was usually outside of people's dorms. So I would ask the city to please set aside money for bulky pickup. Yes, I understand you can call code enforcement, you don't really want to do that all the time. I think the second thing is you could drive your couch to someplace, but if you have a sedan like ours, I'm not putting it on the roof, I can tell you that right now. I did get rid of my couch in California through 1-800-GOT-JUNK. I also want to talk about the train a little bit and the noise of the train. I realize that the council is addressing this. We are a growing community. More people are working at home than ever before due to technology. So the more you work on either quiet zones or moving the train out of Longmont, that would be extremely helpful. I also want to thank Nettie for talking about safety in the parks because I walk around the park also. And I have to say, these are behavioral issues. I have seen people using many of the lampposts as the friendly urinal. I think that's a public health issue. And I think we really need, as a community, to do something like that. I also want to say, I personally do not want the shelter built near my house. So just to put that out there. I also want to give thanks to Peter Perez, who is one of the emergency folks here. He's the head of the CERT program. I became CERT certified when I first moved here because I was used to earthquakes. And I have to say that he's doing a really great job of pulling that together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
I just wanted to let you know, you can call the city and have them pick up large bulky items. You have to pay for it, but you can call them. Yeah. It's not free because it costs money.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to say, welcome to Longmont.
I feel like John Elway when he played the first game. Guard, I think, instead of the center. That work a little better? So just a couple of points on what I've heard so far. These are great conversations. People just kind of have a chance to talk. I haven't been to one before. Good jobs, right? And I mean, every community wants those good jobs, which is where we want to go. The reality is, and it affects the affordable housing issue that I'm here to talk about again, is I understand, and I can find the source, I'm sure, that for every one good job you create, about three or four jobs get created that aren't good. So we need to own all of that as we do our economic development planning and think about impact of job creation on the entire community. Homelessness, data on it. You know, I worked in that field for many years. And the rule of thumb is there's about a third, third of folks, let me take a step back. You got to make a big distinction between single homelessness and family homelessness. When we talk about homelessness, the image comes to mind, the guys in the park, on the streets. And in that population, you got about a third mentally ill, a third substance abuse, and a third, what they call "situationally homeless," out of work, can't find a place. And there's dual diagnosis that crosses across the mentally ill and the substance abuse population. So that's upper-level stuff. In terms of the issue for me, I just always come in and want to give you a couple of data points around recent things I see around the housing situation. And I don't know if you guys saw, you know, The Times Call runs these articles, the top 10 articles or top 10 issues, right, in the year, towards the end of the year. And number three this year was county's hot. Housing market gets hotter. And the sub-headline is "Rents: Home Prices Climb to Dizzying Heights, Pricing Out Majority of Residents." So it's keeping on, keeping on. The local market, the Boulder Area Realtors Association, you know, cranks out all kinds of data. And here's their end-of-year numbers for Longmont. This is the ownership side of things, not rents. Townhomes and condos, the median sales price last year went from 229, no, from 190, I'm sorry, to 229, which is a 20% increase, 20.8. In the median sales price, a single family went from 282 to 323, which is a 14% increase. This is following a couple, three years of big increases. So the fire is getting bigger, right? So that's just food for thought. The other part that I wanted to touch on is kind of, we've got current efforts underway. You know, you guys put, I can't remember how much out of the general fund, maybe 450, and then move some money out of the Human Services Fund. So I just really want to again say, that's a great step forward. My hope is, in, in housing parlance, it's a down payment on funds you find to get after this problem with because it's not going to get any easier, it's not going to get any cheaper, and it's not going to get any simpler. And it's going to take money. And in addition, the disaster recovery situation has produced dollars for the community for housing. I don't know if y'all kept up on that, but there's about 15 million bucks coming in, it looks like, through disaster recovery funds to really help goose the affordable housing efforts. If you look back maybe five or 10 years, we were averaging maybe 25 units a year. We're going to have a whole bunch of units. And then we slip, risk slipping back into that low level of production if we don't really get after this thing. And I know there's been talked about some goals around 50 or 100 units. It's got to be aggressive, guys. And so, so that's kind of some of the things that are underway that are really good. But really, I think the big one, and it's talked about earlier, the Cott Plan, the envisioned Longmont thing you guys are wading into deeper and deeper all the time. You know, you stayed up here and you're going to get down into the zoning and land use and what you can do with the policy tools that you guys have to really look at this thing and get after this thing in a holistic and comprehensive way where you're connecting the dots in the planning process between housing, transportation, employment, services that are needed by people. And my sermon has all been about, think about housing in the planning process just as you do other critical infrastructure needs at the city. That's a mind shift, I think, local governments are trying to go through as they're all dealing with this. So when you're at your retreat on the 19th, when you're thinking about these things, connect those dots. And that will be the only way we're able to kind of move forward on this thing and attach that to money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
You bet.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dennis Bachelor. Live at 3032 Macintosh Drive. I've been a resident of Longmont for about eight years now. And I promise not to yell at you. All right. So I would like to bring up the topic of short-term rentals, as in Airbnb. So anyone who's not familiar with Airbnb, it has a website. It's Airbnb.com. It's a place where a homeowner can place a spare bedroom on the website, market it for rent, whether it's one night, one week, or one month. And the idea is that a vacationer, a person who is coming to town on business, a person who's coming to town even to visit family, can stay in this bedroom, or one of several actually in Longmont, for a reasonable fee. So it's a brokerage, you might say, or a clearinghouse where a fee is transacted, the renter is paying through a credit card to the website, the homeowner's receiving a portion of that. Both sides have some form of a fee involved. It came to my attention recently through the local paper, the Johnny St. Vrain column, addressed this topic. According to Longmont Municipal Code, it is not expressly prohibited to have a short-term rental, such as a one-night rental, in a residential zoned district. But it's also not listed as an acceptable use for a residence. So it's kind of in a gray area, which leaves me, the participant in this sharing economy, wondering whether I'm breaking the law, whether I'm expected to pay taxes, whether I'm expected to do something different, or just plain stop altogether. So what I would like to encourage the city council to do at some point during the year is to debate this, to discuss this, and determine what the rules ought to be for a person like me who would like to list a room or two on this particular website and encourage people to stay with me. I can tell you that through a variety of experiences, I've had nothing but good experiences. I've had people come to town who were planning to move here. And they stayed with me for less than a month and they remain good friends, even come over for Thanksgiving dinner. It's the kind of thing that I would like to encourage. It's the best part of a bed and breakfast is getting to know your tenants. There are also other cases where people come for just one night, they come to maybe a concert in Lyons. It's a fantastic opportunity for them to get to know somebody locally, ask about a recommendation for a restaurant even. So I would like to kind of lift this up as something that's actually kind of a positive for the community. And I am aware of communities around the country outright banning the activity of renting a room on Airbnb. And I would like to discourage that. I'm also aware of another nearby community that has enforced, say, a kind of a moderate set of rules, the requirements such as paying taxes. I'm perfectly willing to pay fair taxes for these types of activities, maybe even a registration fee. But more importantly, I think it's just that, that we would know what the rules are. I, I do know that there's probably HOAs that outright ban this type of activity. I'm not affected by that. And if there were an area, maybe that's restricted in parking, street parking, that could be an issue. But I'd be willing to work with the city on this topic to come up with some fair rules.
That seems very, it's always nice to know what the rules are that you're playing by. I know my, my son lives in Washington DC and they, they have a cabin in Maryland. So on the weekends, they always rent their house out to Airbnb. And it's a huge financial generation and the people that stay there, you know, really like it. So I didn't realize that we really did have a lot of diff, I mean, I didn't even know people use that here, but I know back east in the big cities, there's a lot of people that are using that. So I think it's great for the economy. It's certainly great for my son. It generates a lot of revenue for him. Anyway, I think it's a good idea and I'm glad that you brought it up. And I think we should take a look at, you know, a moderate approach where we can do a lot of this because there's good benefits and, but also regulate it and, and tax it appropriately. So thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I echo that. I just want to make sure that we get that on a coming agenda because I would like to have that discussion. I think it's, one, we need to clear up for our citizens, and the sooner the better.
Councilmember Moore?
So when my wife gets mad and kicks me out of the house, how much do you charge? Anyway, yeah, I think you made, you made some really good points. One of the big concerns I have is the fact that we don't know that these places are safe. And having a registration and an inspection, we know they have CO detectors, smoke detectors, egress windows, those type of things that make these rentals safe. So there is another benefit, other than just for you and Airbnb and the city. And the taxes, really, they're just a pass-through for you. The person renting the room pays that. So it's really no more skin off your nose. So anyway, I, I think we should be having a conversation about it.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Finley that we need to have this discussion. It is a sort of a new thing in the last decade and we really haven't discussed it. And as Councilman Moore said, there are issues on all sides about whether this negatively affects the amount of rental, because people can rent things for one night for a lot more than they can rent it, you know, for a month. And so it, there are all kinds of issues and concerns about safety. It's basically running a business and it needs to be considered that way. And, but we, we ought to have that discussion because it's kind of overdue. Thanks.
Good evening, council and people. I'm Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. Sorry I wobble so much. I don't know what's going on, but I've had major balance problems the last several months. I don't know if it's related to all the bike wrecks I've had on the ice or not. And I both commute every day. And when the streets don't get plowed, even the major streets like Gay Street, for example, arteries, you can't get away from the ice. It's not possible. I mentioned several weeks ago, if they just come through one time in the daytime, like a day or two after a moderately big snowstorm, and plow up the car places, it would be gone. You know, because it semi-melts a little bit, but they don't plow it and it refreezes. And then you get a half an inch of snow on top of the ice and of course, you're going down. And already got broken arms and stuff like that from previous incidents. But anyway, that's part of the city thing. Amy also spoke about soil and compost. I have dug a lot of compost pits by hand because I never had a tractor or anything around the county and around the area. I helped dig one really big one in Jim's backyard some years ago. But it's kind of hard for me to do that, my body the way it is currently. But all of these are factors. And it was cold coming out tonight and it's, gosh, the sun goes down and then it gets cold. I guess that's proof that global warming is a hoax, right? That's the kind of, that's the kind of propaganda we get in the airwaves the last, the last decade or so. Another aspect to that, Flint, Michigan, they, the governor made a proclamation to exterminate democracy. Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution says you're supposed to have possibilities of that, but they wiped it out in Michigan and a number of places. Benton Harbor was the first one they took over. And the whole point of that was to steal a park that was given to the citizens of Benton Harbor, but it became a poverty city and mostly blacks. So they put a dictator over the city and stole the park and gave it to the white town next door and turned it into a big fancy golf course. It used to be a public park, now it's a fancy multimillion-dollar golf course for rich folks. Flint, Michigan, they poisoned the water. And now the entire pop, same size as Longmont, same size as city. Used to be twice as big because it was the home of Fisher Body Works, which started the middle class in this country. The Auto Workers Union started in Flint, Michigan in 1936. And, but it was 95% white then, now it's 60 or 70% black. So hey, just exterminate it, export all the jobs, and then what do you do with the people? Well, you create a drug war and you throw them all into prison. Well, you create a drug war and you throw them all into prison. That's the kind of politics we have in this country, and we better wake up, because it's a permanent question in the body politic. Be aware that Hitler took power in Germany with only 38% of the vote. We do have to pay attention. I gave my first sermon in 10 years, two days ago, and it was interesting. I had to kind of focus on it, and one thing I talked about was ecumenism, religious and national and everything. We have to build a vision that we do live on a common planet, and let's learn how to live together, and democracy is one of the ways that that can function, that we discuss, like right here in Longmont. I'm quite pleased with the way most everything comes up here. And also, The Times called today, they printed, they spelled my name correctly and quoted me accurately. It's like, hey, cool. But let's... I'll close up. Let's publicly be aware of and take on all these issues to the extent that we can. Homeless people, I sort of take care of a couple of them myself, which are not substance abusers, they just can't find work that pays enough to where they can get a place to live. That's the way it works. If you've got a 1% vacancy rate, the prices shoot up. You can't, you know, you've got to find a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Is there... Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. Yesterday, at the Martin Luther King celebration, I want to thank Strider for his story, a very compelling story of his activity in the Silver Ice Movement and his relationship with Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
I would also like to echo that. That was, you did a very good job yesterday, Strider. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I also wanted to thank Strider for reminding us of all the things that Dr. Martin Luther King and all the thousands of other people who fought for voting rights and for people being treated with respect have created. We have made a lot of progress, we have a lot more to make, but we have accomplished stuff by standing up for our rights. I also wanted to thank Strider for introducing us to a new way to get on stage, just hurl yourself up there and roll. I mean, that's a good way to avoid the stairs if you have to, so thank you.
Well, is there anybody else who would like to speak? All right, well, I guess it's... I'd like to make a couple of comments, you know, to address... You know, the affordable housing is really a complex problem, particularly the apartment stuff. I mean, I own a duplex, and, you know, for me, because I've owned it for a long time, I can keep my rents, I don't need to raise rents to make my payments. In fact, I haven't raised rents for, I don't know, six, seven years, it's probably because I'm a horrible businessman, but I'm a good landlord. Yeah, but, you know, I see what's going to happen is, you know, I bought this duplex at $325,000 several years ago, and so, you know, it's got a three-bedroom and a two-bedroom, and it's really nice, and garage, but, you know, I only rented for $1,040 on the three and around $900, I guess, on the two. And, you know, I don't make any money on paper, but I do make the payments, the mortgage payments, and a little bit for maintenance, and that's all I need to do. But at some point, you know, that place is going to sell. I'm going to get old, and I'm not going to want to deal with it, and the next buyer's going to have to pay, you know, $600,000 for that. Yeah. But, and so I see what's going to happen is, as these things turn over and new buyers come in and have to pay these... Then they can't rent these things out for $900 for a two-bedroom apartment, because they'll go broke, and so it's a real problem. But, you know, if there are people out there now that have had something on the market for a long time and don't need to make a lot of money, you know, consider keeping your rent stable if you have good renters. And, I mean, I love my renters, because they pay on time, they're just no hassle, and, you know, they've been good to me, because they haven't torn the place up. So if you find renters like that, you don't always need to raise your rents to get the maximum amount of profit, so I don't know if anybody out there can help, the Johnstons, I'd appreciate it. So I guess now it's... Anybody else from council like to weigh in? Because we're in mayor and council comment type. Councilman Beck?
Okay, I'll give in on the data collection. You've all convinced me that perhaps we have enough data, but we cannot give up on the homeless and just ignore that problem, or the people without homes. I think we have been told several times at council over the years that it is the escalating rents that are putting people in the quandary. So we do need to come up with a solution, because it's been a couple of years now that people have been coming up expressing the same concerns. So if there's any discussion about how we can actually take people off of the streets, until, whether you believe in the trickle-down theory or whatever it is, we still have people who need homes that can't wait for a 10-year study. So I would really love to have this discussion. The police can't continually take people to jail. That costs us as well. They can't continue moving people from park to park at night. That's expensive. We do pay the price, one way or the other. I don't think businesses necessarily want people sleeping on their doorsteps to be near warmth, so I would like to open up that discussion as to ideas, as to how we can actually address this challenge.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I would like us to have more discussions, and I'm sure we will, but one of the officers suggested that we have a park, and that, just as they suggested in Austin, although they haven't implemented it yet. If people have an RV, why are we not letting them have a place to put it? If they have a tent, why are we not allowing... You know, the officer said, "I would gladly just help people get to those places to stay if there were some." He said, "I know some places that we could put them too." So why can't we have a reasonable discussion about providing some kind of... Providing a multiple number of solutions for different sorts of emergency housing, and this is just emergency housing, because, you know, we do have transitional housing and we have long-term housing, but when somebody becomes suddenly homeless, they are sleeping outside on a night like this, and we can't keep doing this.
Councilmember Begley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is Jim still here? Did Jim leave? Not you, the money Jim, the mustache Fu Manchu Jim, Kenworthy. Anyway, yes, I was in the third grade when Ronald Reagan became president. He asked me, so...
Thanks.
No problem. And then, just to clarify my comments, please don't mistake my comments to mean that, you know, I'm all for, you know, finding out a way so that no one is homeless, and nor was my comments about, you know, the use... I wasn't chastising people for using alcohol, smoking pot, or whatnot. I was simply saying that the behavioral health problems that accompany homelessness, such as addiction, and I'm not even blaming people. I mean, attorneys, literally, if you are an alcoholic and steal all your client's money, they're just going to give you a hug and say, "You shouldn't have done that, but you're sick. You need help." I've seen that several times, unfortunately. But anyway, my point is that there's some real mental health, behavioral health issues that I would... I mean, I'm all for finding a solution. My only point is, I don't know, I don't know right now what it is, so I would be... I would welcome a conversation. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
I wouldn't mind having that conversation either, and we've had some discussion with the Boulder County Commissioners, and I'm looking at those commissioners, whether it's through the Consortium of Cities, I'm not quite sure who's on the Consortium of Cities anymore, about a greater discussion within the county about homelessness. Longmont cannot be the only city that's doing anything about it, and, but, you know, and I hear that, you know, we're not the only ones doing it. However, when other cities in the county don't have programs like Longmont does, and I do have to disagree with one of the speakers, Longmont has great services in this community that we offer through nonprofits that offer to help people, whether they're homeless or in need of food, or in need of, you know, finding a job or what have you. It's just that it seems to me that Longmont is the only one that is doing that. But again, I would rather, I'd like to have that discussion with the communities of Boulder County about how can we work together and not have one or two cities, whether it's the City of Boulder or the City of Longmont, be the lead, as far as the lead of, well, Boulder has everything, we'll send them to Boulder, or Longmont has great service, we'll just send them to Longmont. I'd like to stop seeing that and seeing those other communities step up and, you know, help with some of these solutions. That can't... It can be accomplished, but it's going to take just the greater of the seven of us to make it happen.
Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I am on the consortium, and part of the thing is that we have a fund, and that fund will be revolving from one community to another, so that there's enough money to actually make some substantial difference in one community, and then we'll address it to another community, and then another, and another, and it rotates. Boulder, yes, but it is, all of the cities are contributing to this, and, but, the truth is that the most homeless people are in Boulder and Longmont, and so...
Because they come here.
Well, this has been true for a long, long time, and so we need to contribute a lot to it, but the other communities, of course, need to contribute their share and do it in a way that makes sense, so that everything is developed within the community, giving everybody a share, so that it isn't just, you know, a little tiny bit in every city will not do any good. It needs to be concentrated, one city at a time, and that's what they're trying to do, so...
Councilmember Moore?
I believe, I mean, I don't think I'm mistaken, but I believe we funded $15,000 for countywide analysis of where to place a homeless shelter within the county. I think the total cost is $75,000, and all the cities kicked in, except for, I think, Lyons and...
Netherland.
Netherland. So because of their size, yeah, because of their size, they just don't have enough resources, but, so that is ongoing, it's supposed to be done by now. And the last time I saw Commissioner Gardner, I asked her about it, she said it was going to be done around the first of the year, so I think it's now time to, maybe it's a good time to start this conversation, because now we have more information to work from. And I do believe that that is heading in a direction of more of a shared responsibility in the county versus just Boulder or just Longmont.
Councilmember Peck?
Councilmember Santos, you made a statement that is why I want the data. You said that people are coming here because we offer the services, or alluded to that. But is there any data to really back that up? Do we know that for sure, or is that just an opinion? And that is exactly what I wanted to find out. How many people in Longmont are actually taking part in these services, are actually coming from other cities? Do we know that for sure, or is that just an opinion?
I'd love to answer that.
Council? You? Councilmember Christensen?
As far as Lyons goes, I asked Mayor O'Brien about the homeless in Lyons, and he said, "Well, we've just got Charlie, and, you know, we kind of all look out for Charlie." So that's why they don't contribute much. They just got the one guy.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Christensen, I'm not talking about financial, you know, I know that we ponied up $15,000 for that information, and I look forward to having that information, but when it gets to the overall trying to figure out a solution regarding homelessness, it's going to take those other, those two communities also to pony up and pitch in and help with those solutions. Councilmember Peck, if you were to talk to some of the nonprofits in town, you'll understand, and some of the police officers, too, to find out where these people are coming in, it's not an opinion.
I want to weigh in, just a couple of comments on the construction defects. You know, it's really not something that hurts, it's not a problem with homeownership or weakening, because those type of lawsuits aren't happening right now. It's about condo building, and one of the things, one of the problems is, you might have, you know, four or five units out of 100 in a complex, and then the HOA sits on board and they tie up everybody, you know, 96 units in legalities. That's one of the things that we can fix. So the fact that, I don't, I think that, you know, taking a look, that there are some common sense things that we as a city can look at that makes sense, that will actually help and not hurt. It has nothing to do with helping developers, and it's also never going to be a short-term solution to affordable housing, because nobody's going to build condos anyway, even if we had a construction defect ordinance, because right now, you can make so much money as a developer, building apartments with no risk and getting them basically pre-rented to grand a pot before it's even done being built. So who's going to build condos in this environment? I mean, it's... But it might help five years from now or seven years from now on that, but, you know, right now, it's not going to, you know, so the fact that it didn't do anything in Lakewood, well, that doesn't surprise me. It shouldn't have done anything, so... But that doesn't mean we shouldn't do something and try to look what could help people five to seven years from now. So that's my two cents on construction defects, why I think it's still worthwhile looking at. Councilmember Christensen?
On the issue of construction defects, there's, we have seen no evidence anywhere to the idea that this will help improve affordable housing at all, and yet that's the way it is continually couched.
Not in my mind. I mean, that's not even part of why I'm wanting to consider. It's nothing to do, it won't have any effect, probably for years, on affordable housing.
Well, we've seen no evidence that will have any effect, but in any case, to my mind, that it is, it has already been amended 11 times by the building and construction industry to weaken the law, and I think that's enough. It harms homeowners to do this, and it's not just condos, it's townhouses, it's single-family residences. I think if, having God knows how many different construction defects laws across the state doesn't help the, it doesn't give any kind of security to any of the construction people or developers. It's better to do this on a statewide basis, if we do it at all, rather than do it for every single town in the state. It doesn't make sense to me.
But if the state won't do anything, you have to take...
Well, the state has done it 11 times already. 11 times.
I guess that's all in the queue for council and mayor comments. City manager, any remarks?
Wait a minute, I have to have a business of the week.
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Finley?
Actually, before I have my business of the week, I want to thank everybody who came here to talk to us. That's the reason I was sitting here, was to listen to you, not to listen to us. We get to listen to each other every week. I was glad to listen to some other folks tonight. Last week, I was remiss in not having a business of the week. I have had one for over four years, and so I must have one today. I did get a chance to go to the Good Bird Restaurant down at the Village at the Peaks this last week for lunch with my fine husband, and it was awesome, and you should go try it. Good Bird Chicken, it's awesome.
All right. City manager, any comments? All right. City attorney, any comments? All right, we are adjourned.